Oh, that's a...
Right line.
Is that K- K9? I'd like to call the meeting, regular city council meeting, on Thursday, January 17th, to order. I'd like to extend a welcome to the leadership Muscatine class for coming and spending some time with us, hopefully a short, quality time. Okay? Fran, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilmembers Lorette?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Natfig?
Present.
Shahadi?
Present.
Bynum?
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Brad?
Present.
All absent. I'm sorry.
All absent.
Present.
Good. Like to stand with us, say the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to point out, the mayor is not here. I met Mayor Pro Tem Phil Fitzgerald. The mayor is home ill tonight. He said he'd watch us from his couch, I guess, so... Next item on the agenda is communication from citizens. If there's any item, if it's an item that's not on the agenda, you please come to the podium, give me a, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A through B, items 8A through J, filing of communications 12A through B, and tonight's bills totaling
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. This public hearing pertains to a portion, excuse me, proposed rezoning within the Ripley's Mobile Home Park. Ripley's Development Corporation, who is the deed holder for 8.25 acres located in the Mobile Home Park, is requesting a re, is requesting the rezoning of this property to C1 in conjunction with the submission of a preliminary and final plat for a six-lot commercial subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends the approval of this request. Prior to any formal action by council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close, Your Honor.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Jeanette. All in favor, excuse, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
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 You wanted, do you have any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Second item here in the public hearings, is a public hearing pertains to the proposed general obligation refunding loan agreement. The city's financial consultant has analyzed and proposed a refunding of the final three years of the city's June 1, 2006 general obligation bond issue. It is projected the city will realize an interest savings estimated at $50,920 over the three years after taking into consideration the refunding bond issuance cost. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for public comment, to comment.
Move to close?
Second.
I have a motion by Osama, and a second by Scott. Any discussion?
What is the, what is the amount we're refunding? I see the savings listed, but I was wondering how much we're, we're paying off early.
It's right around, I thought I had it on my email here, or my memo, right around a million dollars, about $350,000 each, each of the last three years. And that is at 3.9%, up to 4.0% the current debt is. And then we'll be refunding it with $1,115,000 at a much lower rate of .5% to .75% is what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. From the city administrator, presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance rezoning property within the Ripley's Mobile Home Park. Ripley's Development Corporation, who is the deed holder for 8.25 acres located in the Mobile Home Park, is requesting the rezoning of property to C1 in conjunction with the submission of a preliminary slash final plat for the six-lot subdivision, commercial subdivision. Is there a motion to approve this on the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Scott.
Second.
By, okay, second by Tom. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call. Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion passes 7-0. Next item, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution taking additional action to enter into a loan agreement and authorize the use of preliminary terms of offering their wealth. The city's financial consultant has analyzed and proposed a refunding of the final three years of the city's June 1, 2006 general obligation bond issue. It is projected the city could realize this interest savings estimated at $50,920 over three years after taking into consideration the refunding bond issuance costs. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Jeanette?
Second, Your Honor.
And second by Bob. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes 7-0. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution, resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant application for downtown revitalization in the city of Muscatine. The Iowa Economic Development Authority has opened its application window for its CB, CDBG downtown revitalization program. Successful applications from communities the size of Muscatine could be awarded up to $500,000 for building facade improvements and other downtown revitalization projects. To qualify for the program, the applications must meet one of several national objectives. The community development staff has identified the slum or blighted national objective as the best suited for the application for the city. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Mark, and second by Scott. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes 7-0. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving amendments to the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency Capital Improvement, Improvements Program Grant. On March 12th of 2012, the MMHA was awarded $151,875 in grants from HUD's capital funding program. The city of, sit, excuse me, the city council, acting as the MMHA Board of Commissioners, has the authority to amend the annual plan without HUD approval. At this time, the MMHA is requesting authorization to move the $151,875 from the Property Improvements Line item to operations. This will allow the MMHA to reduce the regulatory burden with this program. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Okay. Osama? And Tom? Any discussion? So, roll call vote. Osama?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the motion passes 7-0. Presented for the city council's consideration is a request from the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency to authorize the submission of a grant application to the United Way. The MMHA staff has completed the grant, United Way grant application for 2014, and is requesting $15,000 to support the fiscal year 2014 Sunset Park after-school program operation. United Way requires this request and budget to be considered, budget be considered and approved for submission by the MMHA Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion by the MMHA Board of Commissioners to approve this request and budget for submission?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second.
And Scott? Any discussion? Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Call a 7-0 vote.
Dick is here. Just quick, did you? Quick question for Dick here. The reason we, the reason we are submitting for this grant here from United Way because we cannot use the HUD funds for, to support this program, is that the case?
That's correct.
Is it?
Yeah. With, that, that $15,000 would go specifically for the teacher.
Oh, okay.
Down there. We cover all the rest of the costs.
Thanks, Dick. Sorry, Osama.
No, that's okay.
Okay, the next item, presented for city council's consideration is a request to
purchase a new red, red fire truck, or fire engine, excuse me. It's not a truck, it's an engine. Two bids were received and included prepayment discounts. The low bid was from Pierce in the amount of $503,481. Staff worked with Pierce and identified optional deductions in the amount of $7,043, which reduced the cost of the engine to $496,438. This includes the prepayment discount, optional deductions, and the cost of 100% performance bond. In October of 2012, city council took action to amend the fiscal year budget to allow for the purchase of the engine in an amount not to exceed $497,000. Is there a motion, excuse me, is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Bob, and second, I think, Jeanette, or Tom. Tom?
Tom first.
Okay. Discussion.
Your Honor, I, I do want to make a point. The request was, was for a new fire engine, not for a new red fire engine. It'd be nice to have a white fire truck, not a red one.
You're wrong, Bob. It was for a red one, if you're recording the budget, so, no. Yeah, that's good.
Checked out the number of shades of white. Does this thing have leather seats?
Oh, good.
I did have a quick question for the chief.
Okay.
First of all, I think we're all supportive of this. It's a really good thing for Muscatine, but the, the Lexus and the Pierce, is that a manufacturer, or is that a dealer, or?
Manufacturer.
Manufacturer. And our current fire engines, are they either one of these?
Yes, we have one of each.
Okay.
They're white, yes.
Well, that, that could help in the way, in that controls might be somewhat similar, or?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question.
Your memo makes reference to optional deductions. Were given up anything important?
No. No. I can share with you the list of items, but the, the big item was the As-Bilt wiring diagrams, that was a big portion of that. And so, again, they give you generic wiring diagrams, so that was a big portion of that $7,000. And then some, some other minor things that we were able to, to work with them and go through line item by line item to get under that $497.
Thank you.
The actual height of the vehicle, is, is there any restrictions? Will it make it in the current building number one, or building number two?
There's no height restrictions with the, the building of the new station like we had at the old station, so we could have built it a lot taller. What we, what we try to do for the hose bed is keep the hose bed down, so when the hose is on it, it doesn't create injuries to the backs and stuff like that, so the height is not an issue.
I could have passed this, but it's much taller than you.
Put that in the journal.
Quoted by Osama.
It should still be a white fire truck.
It's red, it's red, tall fire truck.
While you're up there, what's the timetable on delivery?
It was, uh...
I think it's in there.
Two, 210 days. It was 210 days, so probably be looking at the third week of August. We'll, we'll hand them the check and sign the contract on Monday, and then that 200 days, that 210 days starts on Monday.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Still like to see a white one.
See, there's two of us.
We had to take a vote.
Out of the flock, guys.
Okay. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the police department to approve the purchase of vehicle emergency equipment and installation. The apartment, the department is proposing to purchase a siren and controller for each of the administrative and detective vehicles, as well as white LED lights that would be installed on the, in front of the headlights to aid in the ability to respond to emergencies. Two bids were received, with a low bid from Raycom in the amount of $7,845.90. The funding for this purchase will come from the police forfeiture fund. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Scott?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? They have white lights, not red ones, Osama.
Yeah, that's good.
No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? 7-0 vote. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve golf cart lease and maintenance agreement. The three price quotes were received with a total price including lease of carts, annual delivery, winter storage, and regular, and regular and seasonal maintenance. The lowest responsible quote was from Harris Golf Carts of Piso, Pios, Piosta, Iowa.
Yes.
That's close. Not probably. In the amount of $621.54 annually per cart. As the financing institution does not perform cart service, and the maintenance provider does not offer financing, it is necessary to approve both the financing agreement and maintenance agreement. It is staff rec, staff's recommendation that city council approve a five-year golf cart lease agreement with Yamaha Motor Corporation USA in the amount of $516.54 annually for each of the 47 carts, and a five-year service agreement with Harris Golf Cart, Golf Cars for the annual maintenance of the carts in the amount of $105 per cart. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Tom's got. Any discussion?
How's this compared to the last contract we signed for those?
That's my question.
Have to dig here to find the exact number, but it is very similar. They did go up a little bit since five years has passed. The, overall, it's about $1,000 total for the, for the budget year, a difference in price for the carts.
And this is the same company?
It is, it is the same company, yes.
Do these carts have a Pepsi holder there?
There, there is a beverage holder in the carts, yes.
That's good, good answer, Dan.
Have you, have you looked into the possibility of purchasing the carts versus leasing?
The, for us in our particular situation, we feel like leasing is the best because for the maintenance reason is the, is the biggest one. As the carts continue to get older, the, the fees increase significantly for repair and maintenance for us.
What's, what's normal life of a golf cart?
The carts that we've had, had currently through this year, we've had for five years, and they're about the end of their useful life for us at this point.
Thank you.
All depends whether they end up in the bottom of a water hole or not. Thanks, Dan. Any other questions? Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vote 7-0. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a non-alcoholic beverage agreement for the golf course. The current five-year agreement expires on February 28th of 2013. Two vendors responded to the request for proposals with the recommend, with the recommended cost factor from Coca-Cola Refreshments in the amount of $12,466.88. The cost factor demonstrates Coca-Cola's refreshments proposal is projected to cost $3,377.87 less annually, and $16,889.35 less over a five-year proposed agreement period. If the staff's recommend, it is the staff's recommendation the city council approve the five-year agreement with Coca-Cola Refreshments for non-alcoholic beverages at the golf course. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Moved by Mark?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I, I just want to bring before you some comments from the public, quote-unquote, that we need to look more than just the quote-unquote "cost factor" charts that's been provided to us in the last couple weeks. Sprouse has been in the, in Muscatine for 52 years in the, in his local soft drink business, supports Muscatine with donations, greenback dollars to a lot of community sports, also supports Geneva Golf Club, Playmore Lanes, Happy Joe's concessions. He is a major taxpayer in the fourth ward. Again, it's, it's a local family, locally owned business. Citizens have spoke to me this week, and overwhelmingly support of having local business. They, they, meaning Sprouse, is employees, local workers, not Quad City people. If we don't support local businesses, we'll take our golfing experiences elsewhere, quote-unquote. They, they will not purchase Coke beverages at our local golf course. They will support Pepsi. I would highly recommend that we take a look, again, not at the monetary value, but supporting our local business, like our economic development goal here in Muscatine is. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor? I haven't had as much input from the public, I don't think, as it sounds like Bob has, but I have had public input, and, and like Bob's, it's all been in support of our local distributor. And much as I hate to make exception to normal policy, I think in this case, maybe the, the community involvement of Sprouse over the years, and currently, and, and going forward, exceeds the, the dollar amount discrepancy. So, at this point, I would, I would, I would not support the, the request as proposed. I understand there's definitely two sides, and talked to staff yet this afternoon, and there's compelling arguments on the other side as well. So it's, it's been kind of a difficult decision for me, but the public input has been, to me, at least, has been unanimous for the local.
I, I think we all want to support local business anytime that we can, but I'm a little concerned about the precedent we set if we start moving away from our standard policy. And, I mean, I, I asked a lot of questions last week of Greg through the email, going back and forth, trying to determine if there was any reason why, why that bid from Coke was not a credible bid. If, if, is the company good? You know, are we missing some other cost factor? Are we going to lose money because it's not as popular? But there's nothing to indicate that it's a bad bid. There's nothing to indicate that, that the external source, the external vendor, isn't a good vendor. And again, I have a concern with setting a precedent that we tell other businesses that, that despite any cost, we're just going to go with the local business first. I, I think we have to do right by the city, and over the life of this, it's going to be almost $17,000. You know, again, I, I want to support local business anytime we can, but, but by the same token, we, we have to be fair in the bidding process.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a question. Why do we do a bid for non-alcoholic beverages, but we don't do a bid for alcoholic beverages at the golf course? Dan?
Can't tell you the exact reason why, why we don't bid alcoholic beverages. I do know that the non-alcoholic beverage vendors do, on a regular basis, provide exclusive incentives, and I'm not aware that the, that the alcoholic beverage providers do that.
Have you tried them?
We have not. In the, in the three years that I have been here, we have not.
Why do you carry the brands that you carry now? For alcoholic beverages?
They're, they're the ones that have been requested, and the ones that, that sell well.
Oh, so market share plays a role in this now?
And we try to have, we also try to have a, a wide variety.
How come that market share plays a factor in the alcoholic beverage, but it doesn't play a factor in non-alcoholic beverage?
The, the market share that was considered was more of a national trend, and, and we were looking for nationally known suppliers, and we... And with Pepsi and Coke, we feel like we got that. And that was how it was considered.
Well, that's 65% to 35% national. That's what the percentage is Pepsi versus Coke, so...
In speaking to the RFP itself, and in speaking with the city attorney, did not feel that it was appropriate to use market share. We have an exclusive market at the golf course. You have one provider. You get additional funds for having an exclusive provider there. Coke will give you one number, Pepsi will give you another number when you're talking about market share. There's really no good way to include market share in an RFP that we could determine.
Well, I understand, but you're doing it for one product. You're not doing it for the other product that you are doing there, so...
That's a good question.
If you are serving alcoholic beverage based on what your customers want, why don't you do that for the non-alcoholic beverage?
It's a good question. I don't know.
The same event, if you want to make money, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, the trend that all the non-alcoholic beverage, that volume is going down over the last five years. Is that true statement?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So if we add the beer and alcoholic, it's going up?
That is also correct, yes.
So why don't we go and purchase a cheaper beer and set it there and make more profit? If that's the case, that's the logic that you are presenting right now, so...
Why?
I think it's a good question. I think it's something we should consider. The policy states, and the policy currently states... We have an issue too with tabling it because our contract runs out...
At the end of February.
End of February.
Oh, we still have time.
You know, we have an issue that we're treating these two vendors this time around differently than we're treating them last time around. We had the exact same RFP last time around for non-alcoholic beverages. And now, when the local vendor did not receive the bid, was not the low bidder, we're looking to change the policy to meet, to try and secure the local vendor. It's the same exact RFP that he used last time when he had a sharper pencil and received the bid. He did not sharpen the pencil this time around and did not receive the bid.
Okay. Well, that's fine. They might understand that five years ago when we left the bid, that the local vendor did offer the incentive for exclusivity, and this time, they did not.
Correct.
Vice versa. This time around, the winning bidder submitted that incentive for exclusivity. So that is the lion's share of the difference between the two contracts.
I understand.
It was an open bid situation, and I have to come down on Mark's side on the thing. I think we run a risk of endangering the process by waiving intermittently. In my view, when you politicize the bidding process, that's exactly what's wrong at the federal government level in many states.
I think you should set a standard for everything. You do the same at the location. And we are not doing that. And that's a concern. I mean, you cannot do...
Then we should bid for alcoholics. I agree.
Yeah, I think...
If the issue is to generate for money for the golf course, which is an enterprise fund that it supports itself.
Right.
And there is an issue there where you cannot generate money by doing something else, and you're not taking advantage of it by replacing what the alcoholic beverage should be or get a bid on that. And it's not taking place. You cannot do it halfway here and halfway there. So that's, I think, a standard should be set for the whole operation.
But the issue you're presenting does not pertain to this contract. It pertains to other arrangements with the alcoholic vendors.
It pertains to the whole operation for the golf course period, I think.
Yeah. I think Osama has a very good point that we really need to look at whether or not we should be opening up that alcoholic beverages contract. But the time to discuss whether or not we should be just going here or there with the non-alcoholic beverages would have been before the RFP process, not after.
I agree with you, and I think we should take a look at it if it does come down to exclusivity and receiving additional dollars for that. I can't tell you off the top of my head if that's the reason, but we are happy to take a look at it. Think we should.
I just have one comment. I, in looking at our policies and so forth, I think we need to look at the local preference policy that we do have. And I do think we need to review the policy relating to number of bids and so forth because it's our policy. It's not necessarily state law. And try to come up with something, not necessarily trying to exclude all outside, anybody outside of Muscatine or outside of Muscatine County or Iowa or whatever. But I think it's something that we need to talk about as a council, so...
When I look at the $17,000, that is a lot of money. And I just, you know, have to go with Coca-Cola, like Mark says, because that's just way too much money difference.
And we have a legitimate request for proposals that was responded to. Everything's on the table, and one won, and one didn't. And I don't necessarily like it either, but it's a contract, so...
Any further discussion? This is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Those three opposed, I think.
Can we do a roll call?
We can do a roll call. That'd be fine. We'll start with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Nay.
Osama?
Nay.
Scott?
Nay.
Mark?
Aye.
And Phil votes aye. So that's four to three.
We're three.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is communication from Council. So we'll start tonight with Tom, because he's always last.
Thank you, Your Honor, but I have nothing to add tonight.
Ah, rat. Okay. Jeanette?
I would just like to ask for an update on the theater opening. Is that the middle of next month?
February, last I heard, I believe I heard tonight end of February is the latest update for the grand opening.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeanette, was that for the, did you say theater?
Theater, Fridley.
Fridley Theater.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Osama?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Scott?
Just glad to see the leadership Muscatine class here tonight. And I hope someday some members of that class are sitting up here.
That would be good. Mark?
I would just echo Scott's comments and just say it's nice to not be so lonely in this room on Thursday now.
And I have nothing to add, except...
One thing, Your Honor?
Pardon?
One thing, if I could remind the audience.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock, is the Recreation Extravaganza at the mall. We have 29 vendors from the mall that'll be participating in that. There'll be a walk at 11 o'clock. You'll be able to meet the not-for-profit recreation providers affiliated with Muscatine Parks and Recreation. And as we come, encourage you to walk at the mall from 10 to 1 and meet our different recreation providers in the community.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
Okay. Fran?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. We need to have requests to approval to enter into closed session after code, Iowa Code 21.5, to discuss pending litigation.
So moved.
And we got a Scott and Mark. We have a roll call vote. Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye. So we have a 7-0, and we go into closed session as soon as Council chambers are cleared.
Excuse me.
It was kind of a...
Fun starts now.